Okay, good evening. My name is Christine Kirby and I am Mass DEP's Assistant Commissioner of the Bureau of Air and Waste. Welcome to our third meeting in a series of four virtual outreach opportunities that Mass DEP is hosting this summer to get public input on our solid waste master plan for 2020 to 2030. Thank you for joining us. I want to start by noting that this meeting is being recorded so that we can capture your input and your contributions. I also want to introduce other members of the Mass DEP team here tonight. We have Greg Cooper, John Fisher, Laura Swain, and Shane Settleson. Tonight is about hearing from you. We are eager to hear your perspectives and ideas about managing solid waste and recycling in Massachusetts, whether they are big picture ideas or statewide ideas or based on your own personal experiences in your own community. I'm going to walk you through the agenda and give a brief introduction, but before I do, I'd like to turn it over to Kurt Warner, who is helping us facilitate the Zoom platform, to give an overview of how the virtual participation will go tonight and how you can let us know when you'd like to speak and other ways you can share information with us. Kurt?
Okay, great. Thank you, Christine. So, thanks for everybody for joining the Zoom call. Before we start, just want to share a few Zoom-related logistics. I recognize some of the names from last time, but for those who are new, just to reiterate, yeah, this meeting is being recorded, so we have a record of your comments. In order to minimize background noise, currently all attendees are on mute. However, there will be opportunities to provide feedback. Throughout the meeting, we will unmute you when you have something to share. In order to provide feedback when we ask for your input, we ask you to do the following. So if you haven't already done so, please enter your full name, if not currently showing, so we can easily identify you. For those new to Zoom, you can do this by opening the participants panel, if not already open. For many, it will be docked on the bottom of the screen. Once you see the panel appear on the right side of your Zoom window, hover the mouse over your name in the participants list. You will see the more option. Under more, you can select rename. If you haven't done so, please enter your full name now. If you have any difficulty with this or any Zoom feature tonight, you can always use the chat feature at the bottom of the screen and direct your question to the Zoom support folks, which is myself and Maya. And next to her name, she should see our first names in Zoom support. And we have the power to rename you, for example, if you're having difficulty with that feature. We strongly encourage you to keep both the chat panel and participant panel open throughout the meeting, if possible, since you need both in order to provide feedback. When we open the virtual floor for your feedback, we need your help to keep us organized to determine who speaks next. You do this by raising your virtual hand, which is typically found by selecting your name in the participant panel and choosing raise hand. For many on desktops, it will be docked on the bottom of the participant panel. For those joining us on iPhones or Android, you'll find this under the more option. If there are multiple hands raised simultaneously, our team will do its best to get to you in the order that hands were raised. Please take a moment to find the raised hand option, which may be different in a different location based on your device or browser. As practice, please raise your virtual hand now. If you can't figure out how to do this, please reach out to Maya privately in the Zoom chat feature. I'll give a second for everybody to try to find their virtual hand, and please keep Okay. When is your turn to provide feedback? One of our team members will give you some advance notice in the chat panel. The Zoom team will then unmute your line and lower your virtual hand once you start talking. Keep in mind that sometimes there's a delay of a few seconds when we take you off mute. For those who haven't done so already, we encourage you to share your video by turning on your video camera. And thank you very much, and I'm going to turn the presentation back over to the Mass DEP team.
Thank you, Kurt. So up on the screen, you'll see the agenda. We've already covered the first two items. And I'm going to talk about why we're having these meetings engaging with the public and about the particular areas we want to focus on for tonight's discussion. Then John Fisher of Mass DEP, who I introduced already, is going to give you a brief overview of the solid waste master plan. We hope you've had the chance to take a look at the draft plan on our website or listen to the summary webinar posted there. If not, no worries. These materials will remain available after the meeting for you to access at your convenience. Next, we are going to go through each of the three areas and give you an opportunity to share your views, ideas, and concerns. We will summarize the issue and then open the floor for comments and then move to the next issue and follow the same pattern. So last fall, we released the draft master plan, sought public comment, and held four public hearings. We got a lot of interesting input reflecting different ideas and points of view. At the same time, we were asked to engage more with communities, to be sure that we were connecting with people in different communities. And in particular, we wanted to make sure we were considering the concerns of environmental justice populations and communities. Recent events have certainly highlighted the need for discussions about racial equity and environmental justice. At this time, we owe special attention to communities that have borne disproportionate burdens and have not received equal benefits. We need to make sure that we are considering these issues and impacts in this update to the plan. We need to also make sure that we are developing as part of the plan a way to engage regularly and effectively with these communities, and we are committed to that as an important element. Given the ever-expanding effects of climate change, we also want to make sure that we highlight climate change issues and how they will play out in managing waste and other materials. And of course, since last fall, when we released the draft plan, COVID-19 has changed our world. That includes changes to the way solid waste is generated and managed. We are still living through the COVID emergency, and it's important for us to consider what issues have emerged during this time. So we have decided to seek more input through public comment in these meetings and to focus on the importance of these three areas as it relates to solid waste, particularly environmental justice, climate change, and COVID-19, as I've already mentioned. Mass DEP would like to thank the following organizations for helping us to organize and promote these meetings: Clean Water Action, Community Action Works, Conservation Law Foundation, and Masburg. We launched a public comment period this past June 25th, and it will remain open through September 15th. Again, as you've heard already, these sessions will be recorded, and we will plan on taking notes on the discussion tonight. We also encourage you to submit written comments and details on the notice will be shared at the end of this virtual meeting tonight. Just as a reminder, tonight is the third of four public meetings being held virtually. We already held meetings on July 22nd and August 20th, and the fourth will be held on Thursday, September 10th. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Fisher.
Great. Thank you, Christine. I want to start my comments just by thanking all of you for joining us here this evening and taking the time to talk with us about Massachusetts Solid Waste Master Plan and to provide your input. We really appreciate your time and effort in this regard, and thank you for being here with us tonight. So I'm going to start by giving a brief overview of the solid waste master plan, and then I'll go through some of the discussion questions we'd like to focus on with you tonight. So Mass DEP is required by statute to maintain and update a statewide solid waste master plan. Typically, we prepare these plans on a 10-year cycle. We're currently operating under a plan that runs from 2010 to 2020, and this plan that we're talking about here tonight would provide our program and policy framework for the next decade to carry us from 2020 through 2030 and also establish a vision to go beyond 2030. This is a chance both for us and for all of you to step back a little bit and think about solid waste management in a big picture. And this is an opportunity for us, as Christine mentioned, to make sure we're getting as many perspectives as possible reflected in decisions about this plan and directions in the plan. So this series of meetings that we're going through now and in the comment period that we're within is our opportunity to get more input into this 10-year planning period. It's also important to note that we'll continue to revisit and, as necessary, evolve the plan over the course of the next decade. One thing that we've done very actively here in Massachusetts is we have established a solid waste advisory committee and associated subcommittees on various topics, and those groups have been meeting actively for a number of years, and we expect to continue that activity and that engagement over the coming years as we move forward with implementation of the 2030 solid waste master plan. And as we do that, we're also looking at a mid-course assessment midway through the plan sometime around 2025 to check in, see how we're doing, and see if we need to make adjustments at that point. So while this plan that we're developing now and seeking input now to finalize is an important document and lays out this program and policy framework for the next decade, I also want to emphasize that we'll be continuing to evolve this as we move forward. Towards the end of the presentation, actually, on our last slide, we'll provide our link to our solid waste master plan webpage, if you're not familiar with that already. That's where you can view the actual plan. There's also a 30-minute overview presentation that I've done on the plan. If you're not familiar with it, it gives you a good introduction and overview to the full plan. And there are also some associated documents that go along with the plan that may be helpful for you. So we'll provide that link for you at the end of the presentation tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn to the next slide, and we'll be going through, as you heard, we have three primary topic areas that we're particularly focused on as we go through this public comment period, and these are the questions that we'll be using to focus our discussion here tonight. So I'm going to go through these all to begin with, and then we'll take each set of these topics in turn and have some time to talk about each of them with you. So our first set of questions relates to environmental justice issues and concerns. So we have three questions that we've articulated here. What specific challenges are faced by populations that are disproportionately impacted by solid waste activities, and how could our solid waste master plan address these challenges? How can environmental justice communities and their concerns be better reflected in how waste is managed in Massachusetts? And are there specific policies or programs recommended that would address the solid waste management-related concerns of environmental justice communities? So this is a topic that has come up a lot, came up a lot in our first round of public comment, and you know, we were encouraged to engage in more discussion over environmental justice concerns, and we, you know, we really agreed with that perspective and the importance of that issue. So we're going to take some time tonight to talk through those questions and concerns. The second set of questions that we'll be talking about and issues is related to what actions can we pursue to reduce carbon emissions from the management of solid waste in Massachusetts to help meet the Commonwealth's Global Warming Solutions Act goals. We've had our Global Warming Solutions Act in place for a number of years now. It sets a goal to reduce those emissions by 2020, but then we're also looking at broader, longer-term goals beyond 2020, associated with reducing carbon emissions in Massachusetts. I just want to maybe turn briefly back to you for a moment, Christine, if you want to just add a little bit more on the Global Warming Solutions Act and our goals in that You're on mute right now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, John. So John mentioned Massachusetts has a Global Warming Solutions Act, and we have developed a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to mitigate the effect of climate change. And the current plan in place is a plan for 2020. It requires that the Commonwealth reduce emissions between 1990 and 2020 by 25%. And we're pretty much on track for that. We have a couple more years to demonstrate that, but we do have a number of policies and programs in place to meet the 2020 target. And now, EEA, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, is now planning for the next target for 2030 and how to meet the target set by Governor Baker earlier this year to meet net zero emissions by 2050. So we've focused a lot on the electricity sector. We're now starting to turn more focused towards the building sectors and the transportation sectors, although we've made quite a bit of progress in the transportation sector. So we know we have more work to do. So the question for tonight is what role should the management of solid waste play in reducing greenhouse gas emissions to help the Commonwealth meet its stringent climate goals? So that's a general question, but what are some specific ideas that you might have on how the management of solid waste can help us meet our climate goals? So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Christine. And then our next set of issues that we want to focus on in particular is what impacts has COVID-19 had on waste management? We know COVID-19 has affected our lives in countless different ways, both large and small, and you know, it certainly had an impact on waste and materials management, among other things. So our question here, you know, both what impacts does COVID-19 have, but then also are there specific waste management initiatives that may be either problematic or beneficial to implement as we adjust to the impacts of COVID-19? So that'll be the third set of questions that we'll talk about, and we will have time both over the course of talking about these issues, but also at the end, if you have comments that don't specifically relate to one of these topics directly, we welcome those as well. So we'll have time at the end for other comments that may not fit neatly with one of these three areas. So with that, I'm going to turn to our first set of discussion questions here regarding environmental justice, and I'll repeat these questions. We'll keep them up here as we open up common and hear from you on these topics. So these questions, again, what specific challenges are faced by populations that are disproportionately impacted by solid waste activities? And how could our solid waste master plan address these challenges? How can environmental justice communities and their concerns be better reflected in how waste is managed in Massachusetts? And then what specific policies or programs would you recommend that would address the solid waste management concerns of environmental justice communities? So at this point, I'd like to open it up to people to comment on these questions and issues. If you have something that doesn't relate exactly to one of these questions, that's fine. We're looking for comment and thoughts in this topic area in general. So as Kurt mentioned at the beginning, if you'd like to make a comment and share some thoughts, please raise your hand as we went over at the beginning, and we'll make sure we call on people in turns.
Great. Thank you so much, John. I see one question so far from Gillian Howell. I'm unmuting you right now. Might take a moment. Okay, you should be on.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Thank you. So my name is Gillian Howell. I grew up about a quarter mile from the Wheel O'Brader Saugus facility, and I'm a member of the Alliance for Health and Environment and the Saugus River Watershed Council. I just want to start by thanking you all for the opportunity to speak in the reopening of the hearings this summer, to allow for greater participation, especially of communities that are impacted, and especially for highlighting climate change, environmental justice, and COVID. This acknowledgement of these issues specifically here at stake is incredibly important and appreciated. But I also want to emphasize that this kind of acknowledgement and this space to hear us out is really meaningless without actually taking what we're saying and incorporating it into this plan. I feel like I've been to meeting after meeting and written letter after letter, and I know many that are on this call and others who have been in fights against facilities polluting their environments and neighborhoods have been doing the same for decades. These hearings on the solid waste master plan are just the latest opportunity for us to kind of talk about the same type of thing about the fight that we've been in forever to try to get our voices heard and to try to get you all, the agency that should be protecting us and protecting the environment, to do just that. It's very frustrating to have to constantly show up and feel like really nothing has changed. Massachusetts has these solid waste master plans and their climate goals and targets and actions on environmental justice, but if you were to ask the people that are actually living next to incinerators or landfills or both, in the case of Wheel O'Brader Saugus, nothing has actually changed for the better, and in fact, COVID has only made things worse. We know that those with pre-existing health conditions like asthma are the ones most susceptible to COVID, and we know that those living around these incinerator facilities like Wheel O' Brader, a facility that burns trash and dumps toxic ash into a nearby adjacent landfill, have poorer health than those who are not breathing the sand every day. And I understand fully that waste needs to go somewhere. Wholesale changes in how we produce and consume need to happen before we can ever truly get to zero waste in a circular economy, and I know that is really beyond the scope of this solid waste master plan and the authority of DEP and the state of Massachusetts. But I also know that we can do a whole lot better and take steps to get there and use this plan as an opportunity to really envision what we want for the state and the people living here. Specifically for COVID, we've definitely regressed reverting back to one-time, single-use throwaway plastics. This can't be a permanent regression. It should be acknowledged in this plan. We can't disregard the impacts to the environment that this increase in waste has, because after this pandemic is over, we'll all be left to deal with this waste that we're generating right now. Outside of COVID stuff, currently, waste bans are not enforced like they should be. Composting and recycling can and should be expanded, and no money should be invested in incinerators. The waste-to-energy jargon also needs to be cut out of this report. We need to call it what it is. We're burning trash to create electricity. It's not clean. It's bad for the climate, and it's bad for localized air quality. And for those facilities that are some of the oldest and most out of date and most vulnerable to climate change, the ones that would never be built today in the same way should be phased out first. Wheel O'Brader Saugus is unlined. It's located in an area of critical environmental concern designated by you all, surrounded by water and vulnerable to storm surge and flooding, and we see the plant failing on a daily basis. This summer alone, there have been multiple fires and days and nights of noise coming from the plant as they try to make repairs to this outdated technology. It makes no sense to make a plan for the next 10 years that doesn't acknowledge the detriment to the communities and environment facilities like this have and doesn't commit to actually phasing them out. This agency, you all, you're supposed to be protecting the people and our health and the environment. So again, for like, time and time and time again, I find myself here to urge you all to listen to what is being said from those that are being forced to bear the burden of waste generation and waste incineration in Massachusetts and use this as an opportunity to create a plan that will protect us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gillian.
No other questions at this time, John, than I was saying?
I see one comment here in the chat, so I'll just read this one from Ruth. I apologize. I mispronounced your last name, Ruth Trumarki. "Part of the master plan considers building more transfer stations throughout the state and placing them close to railways, apparently to facilitate shipping waste out of state." Is this still accurate? I understand the first preferred steps will greatly reduce the amount we need to ship out of state. Is there any chance that we can, in the near future, call for completely processing waste within our state borders? So I think, just the one comment, I'd make about the question there about whether that's accurate. I think it, I guess what I would say is it's not so much that the master plan considers building more transfer stations throughout the state as more that that's the way the solid waste industry is going in terms of what facilities are being proposed to be built and developed in Massachusetts, that that's the, you know, the direction we're seeing. That's not so much what the plan is calling for, but that's the way that the infrastructure development seems to be going. Okay, I just want to pause there for one more second in case anyone has any. We can certainly circle back to environmental justice concerns as we go, but I'll just take one more moment here before we move ahead to our next set of questions here. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead.
Question, hand that just got raised.
Okay.
As you're about to transition. Eve, I'm going to take you off mute. Just give me one second here. There's a little bit of delay, and I apologize. All right, Steve, we should be able to hear you.
Good evening, John and staff and other attendees. I just wanted to make a point that in the original comments that the Massachusetts, my name is Steve Changaris. I work with the National Waste and Recycling Association, the Massachusetts chapter. We submitted comments on the master plan back in December, and we talked about the very issue of adequate in-state capacity versus reliance on out-of-state waste markets. And I think John was fair in the assessment that that's the way the industry is trending because of the difficulty to site and build capacity to manage the state's wastes within its own borders. So since the waste has to go somewhere, the industry has been gearing up to transfer the waste, and since the sites are more distant in the current cycles than in the previous cycles, the rail haul of material works. So, but I did want to just reemphasize that the Mass chapter has gone on record urging the department and others to recognize the value of having adequate in-state disposal capacity to manage the waste materials created by the citizens. And it's an activity that is done in most places around the country. There's always export in some markets, and Massachusetts has had a historical path of providing for enough capacity to take care of its waste, but it looks like we're entering a trend or a cycle where we may be exporting waste for a good while as part of a comprehensive management scheme, which is entirely appropriate given the interstate waste markets that we operate in. So I just want to say, make that point, and thank you, John.
Thank you, Steve.
John, we have another question. Mary Lester, I'm taking you off mute. Hope you can hear us, Mary.
Hi, I can hear you.
Yeah, great.
I want to thank the board for the time, for allowing us to move forward, having a voice on all these important topics. My name is Mary Lester. I'm the executive director of the Saugus River Watershed Council. We're a nonprofit organization that was founded in 1991 to protect and restore the natural resources of the Saugus River watershed. First, I'd like to completely agree with Gillian. We definitely share the same views and frustration. I also live close to Wheel O'Brader, and I've suffered major health problems that could possibly be related to Wheel O'Brader. Discuss climate change a little bit and some of the facets of climate change, and although I couldn't agree more that with everyone that has commented in the previous meetings, I'd also like to talk or ask questions about the southern abiding neighbor to Wheel O'Brader. Recently, a certificate of the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the ENF, the environmental notification, in regards to the Dewey Daggett landfill remediation project. There is an 8.5-acre project site that consists of an inactive landfill which is bounded by the Salem Turnpike on the northwest, the Wheel O'Brader landfill on the northeast, and the Pines River salt marsh to the southeast. This proposed project includes stabilization of the Dewey Daggett landfill adjacent to the Pines River and the Rumney Marsh and the area of critical environmental concern, the A C E C, to prevent further exposure and release to the solid waste into the river in the A C E C. So I know you guys mentioned a little bit about Governor Baker's executive order of 569, establishing an integrated climate change strategy for the Commonwealth. That was actually issued in September of 2016. That was actually issued in September of 2016. The order recognizes the serious threat presented to the climate change directed the executive branch agencies to develop and implement an integrated strategy that leverages state resources to combat climate change and prepared for its impacts, which seems very relevant to what we're talking about with Wheel Obrator. Also, the Northeast Climate Science Center developed projections of changes in temperature, precipitation, sea level rise for Massachusetts. The predictions indicated that by the end of the century, average sea level in the Dewey Daggett project is expected to increase by between four feet, which is a low projection, to almost 10.2 feet, which is the high projection, with an intermediate projection of five feet. As we already know, many neighborhoods in Revere, Sagas, and Lynn are underwater during these major storm events. What might happen if the ash buried in the landfill, if sea level rises to the production of five or feet, five feet or more? My main question and concern is why isn't Wheel Obrator being held to the same standards as the neighbor of Dewey Daggett? I do understand there's been testing done there. But why isn't it required by the neighbor? Why wouldn't DEP require this testing? It is such a simple request to know how safe our waters are within a state-protected A C E C. I know environmental justice, climate change, and COVID are stated separate issues in many cases. But as this one, it's a very big picture that are all related. And the Dewey Daggett site, the neighbor to Wheel Obrator, surrounding EJ communities, fearing neighbors of Wheel Obrator, worrying about climate change, sea level rise, possibly anticipating that they may lose everything they've worked for due to ignorance and greed. Then to top it off, these are some of the hardest-hit communities when it comes to COVID. We really appreciate your time, DEP, to like, look at these and make these issues aren't about party lines or monetary investment, just that you are protecting us. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, there is some activity in the chat. I wasn't quite sure if you wanted to address any of those questions if this is related.
Sure. So this is another question related to Wheel Obrator Sagas. How about air testing? I live a half mile from Wheel Obrator. Worry all the time when horrible stench occurs like last month. Fire in our backyard, can't testing be done when next crisis occurs there? So I can also turn to to Christine and Greg on this, but I can't really comment particularly on facility-specific response or permit or testing, things like that. You know, my role here is focused on developing the statewide master plan, so I can't answer specific questions about relative to Sagas. But I'm happy to turn to, you know, Christine or Greg, if you have any additional information there that that you want to share.
Yeah, thanks, John. This is Greg Cooper. I did contact, we had the question last time about where the status was of noise and odor monitoring. I forwarded that up to our regional office, and my understanding is they're working with the facility on some testing procedures, and they're actually going to need to approve a plan. And they told me that they would be getting in contact, actually, at this point, Deborah Panetta originally asked the question at the last meeting. But I'm sure they're going to be sending that to the Board of Selectmen in general, in terms of the process going forward with the Wheel Obrator. But that's about all I kind of have on that particular activity at this point in time.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
John, there's one additional question from Elizabeth Saunders. She's on a phone unmute. Hopefully it comes in, okay? Can you hear us, Elizabeth?
Yep. Yes. Hi. Good evening. I am Elizabeth Saunders, and I'm the Massachusetts Director for Clean Water Action. Thank you again to the DEP team for holding these hearings. I just, in light of the some of the comments that have been made so far, I just, you know, want to really appreciate Gillian and Mary for speaking up to talk about what the real impacts of our waste disposal system on their lives and on their communities. And I think that those, as well as the folks that are talking, you know, explaining similar things in the chat, and I just think that that, the comments that they're giving, combined with the comments that Steve made about how we need to have in, how we need to have in-state disposal, just really highlight, so I, I think it's true. We need to take care of our waste here, but what we need and not be shipping it off to somebody else somewhere else. And what we need to be doing is reducing that waste as much as possible. And given the contributions that the waste makes to the climate change and given the incredible damage that incineration and landfilling does to the communities surrounding them, as evidence, you know, with the prime example of what's going on in Sagas, there's nothing short of like truly ambitious, zero-waste planning is warranted here. And so I think that, you know, Clean Water has previously made some made submitted comments in the last comment period to that effect. And I mean, I won't go into detail again here, but I just want to reiterate that what's that the the whole conversation in the solid waste master plan should just be, should be focused on what is the absolute maximum reduction we can do? And how do we be as ambitious as places like San Francisco that have reduced their waste by 80% by places like, you know, LA and Austin, who have zero-waste plans? How do we follow those leads and get Massachusetts to the absolute lowest waste levels as possible? How do we, and and that part of that needs to be really the DEP working with cities and towns to do what they need to do in-state, as well as creating the state-level infrastructure for waste ban enforcement, for composting, for for reuse. So just want to make sure that these pictures are brought together. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
John, we have another person with a raised hand, Ann Devlin.
Hi, I I I know that I've spoken at each of the other meetings, and I've been at all the meetings because this is just so important to me, and that's why I'm speaking again tonight. And just to reiterate what Elizabeth said and and to have you hear it again, there is, there is just no way to expect any type of a a phase-out of incineration without, you know, making sure that we get less to the incinerator. And it can't just come from Sagas. It has to come from all all the towns that bring their their trash to incineration, for incineration. Because, as I said last time, Wheel Obrator is a for-profit facility, and they rely on on that trash to keep their profits up. And even if Sagas did an incredible job and Revere did an incredible job in lessening what goes there, it's not not going to make a difference unless was that are in place, what we've talked about before, making sure that food waste isn't isn't included in in trash pickup, getting textile programs that are statewide programs and that are easy for people to do, so they do it. All of the things that we've talked about that where the goal would be to get less trash to the incinerator, and that's the only way that we can phase it out. And so forgive me for saying the same things over and over again, but I just feel like they they just need to be said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
John, we have Kelly Slater, who has her hand raised. I just unmuted her. Might take a second. Sorry, it seemed to be another, see a huge delay here. I'll try again. There we go, Kelly.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. My name's Kelly Slater, and I live in Sagas, fairly close to the Wheel Obrator plant. And first of all, I just want to say I totally support what Elizabeth and Ann Devlin just said. My feeling is that so much of this master plan seems to be less planning and more reacting to a waste crisis. And I think as long as we stay in a sort of reactive mode of thinking, oh, my God, there's all this waste. We better burn more, or we better ship it to another state where we have no idea what will ultimately become of it is not really the route that we should be going in. We really need to resolve that we are going to do something to improve the quality of life of people living near these facilities, that we really need to resolve to take every step possible to reduce the impact on our climate. And that is going to take a lot of determination and planning, obviously, and some sacrifice. But I also think that if we could resolve to reduce everything we possibly can and to get some recycling facilities in the state and incentivize existing businesses and perhaps new businesses to use those materials that come out of the recycling process, I think we would go a long way toward addressing this issue and also just really improve the quality of life of the residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I strongly urge you to turn away from incineration and possibly moving trash to other states and really, really work on putting that money and that effort into programs that would not only help address the waste disposal issue, but could actually be an economic boon for people in Massachusetts in terms of starting new businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Paulina is next. It is unmuted you.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that. So I just want to echo what Kelly was just sharing in terms of reducing. I think we need to address the throwaway culture that we are so, that we're living in in the United States, and we not only have to just push people to recycle, but also to repurpose materials and to rethink where we're buying things, how much we're buying. I think there could be a way to incentivize young people specifically to really rethink our consumption habits because they are, the amount that, you know, people, the amount of trash that people produce in the United States is absolutely incredible, and there is no need for us to be consuming that much. And I I think it is extremely important to recycle, but I also think that there is a huge human rights issue behind recycling and behind where we're sending our recycling to. And so by reducing our waste, we might be able to even address that. So yeah, and just thank you for holding these meetings. I really appreciate this opportunity, and I wish, and I know we might brainstorm some other ways to get more people to attend the next one. And I wish I saw more people of color within the participants. I I really just want to make sure that the people in these environmental justice communities are part of the conversation and have the materials to stay informed and stay safe.
Thank you, Paulina.
John, I have somebody in chat who's having some difficulties, so I'm going to move her next. She was unable to find the hand raised. Deborah Panetta, unmute you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the DEP and everyone on this call for allowing me to speak again. I was at the last meeting. I wanted to let everyone know that nobody has contacted the Board of Selectmen in Sagas or me regarding the noise or the ear quality monitors that we discussed at the last meeting, just as a follow-up. I talked about producer take-back at the last meeting. That was a big thing that we were discussing not too long ago, and it seems to have had fallen by the wayside. I think that's something that we should be encouraging. I think too, within the proposed solid waste master plan, we're allowing incineration. You allow incineration. In the future, there really, where's the incentive to reduce, reuse, to recycle, especially for communities that aren't host communities of an incineration, of an incinerator, as well as the unlined ash landfill, which we have both in Sagas, one adjacent to the other. And as you all know, it's in an area of critical environmental concern, which with an unlined ash landfill, this would never be allowed today. We talked at the last meeting about the nitrogen oxide and how they're allowed to buy credits for more efficient incinerators. That's not helping our health and the health of the people that live around Wheel Obrator Sagas. It's a huge concern with people's health, not just with asthma, with breathing, with cancer. We want to, you can't blame any one particular area or our plant. We know that. But we don't want to add additional risk to any area, and I don't want to see people in my community sick. I mean, we're dealing with the COVID-19 right now. I'm really concerned about the health issues that we have to deal with in Sagas, Revere, Lynn. Again, thank you for letting me speak. The Board of Selectmen this evening took a vote to send a letter into the DEP regarding the solid waste master plan. So you'll be receiving that letter from us within the next week or so before the September 15 deadline. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Deborah. Steve, I'm going to unmute you again. Just give it a second or two. This is a slight delay.
Yeah, John, is the climate change slide the one that we're on still?
Well, I think we're on multiple issues at this point, so the climate change is certainly fair game, if you like.
Well, I'd like to just address that, you know, I think we made the first hearing. We missed the one on August 20th, and we'll try to stay with you through the next one in September. But, you know, we've gone on record in the past that, you know, it's the industry's position that Massachusetts has a pretty top-of-the-shelf recycling and waste system and that the operations and facilities, they looked at in a full lifecycle lens of climate change, from everything from raw material extraction to transportation to production to the use of and the after-use of life management of materials is really a small percentage of all the climbing change, climate-changing impacts. So some of the discussions that were made earlier, some of the points, were really very valid in that it's really the upstream impacts from our consumption of materials that drive climate change. And one of the biggest ones and makes the waste industry look small is transportation, that the impacts from our transportation systems and then our energy production, you know, again, are much larger in scope and size than from the actual waste management activities that we do. So we applaud the state's efforts to do more generation, can generator education about buying habits and impacts, consumption pattern impacts, and to pursue those as the greatest ways to achieve positive Global Warming Solution Act results. The other part of this is if you have a system that is at work today, which has great environmental benefits, like the state's recycling system, you know, making that system more effective and efficient is really key to help with climate change. So we're very supportive of the Recycle Smart MA program, which is one such great example, because if we have a MRF, a material recovery facility or recycling facility that is taking 100 tons of material a day, and 75% of that is waste, the, it's just dragging down the efficiency of that program and adding costs to the people trying to do the program and adding costs to the people trying to do the right thing when they recycle. So, you know, upstream focus, other sectors that have equal, if not greater, impact on global warming, and obviously, other real hard, basic, simple programs like the Recycle Smart are all really where the the department can go to help with the climate change impacts from solid waste, from our view.
That's Christine. I want to jump in here, because I think you raised a lot of good points and a lot of the good work that they're doing, everybody's doing in the solid waste sector. But as we move forward with more stringent goals, particularly in 2030, as I mentioned, but also to achieve net zero by 2050, we need to be working at all sectors. And you did mention transportation. I've spent a lot of my career working on how to reduce emissions from transportation. But and that's a hard sector, as is buildings. But we're going to be looking to all sectors to reduce the climate emissions. Appreciate your comments.
I want to get to just cover two comments that came in through the chat here. One is from Elizabeth Saunders, who wrote, I want to echo Jillian's comment to let the language waste to energy should be removed from the master plan. It is greenwashing and does not belong in an official government document. And then from Ruth Trimarki, returning to out of state shipping of solid waste, this does raise a question of environmental justice by shipping to states where labor is presumably cheaper or processing costs are lower due to lower, lower environmental constraints, e.g., Georgia, Mississippi, Ohio, and Pennsylvania. And the carbon footprint is presumably higher than not shipping at hundreds or thousands of miles. What is the status of alternative processing methods, e.g., anaerobic digestors, incentivizing useful scale composters and cleaner incinerators, any plans to invest in these within mass, with appreciation for the complexity of what you're dealing with? Thanks for considering this question. And I can say briefly that, you know, the plan does, does talk quite a bit about our infrastructure beyond disposal infrastructure. And one of the areas where the head infrastructure has grown a lot is anaerobic digestion capacity, as well as compost capacity to manage food materials. So that is something we, we talk about in the plan, along with our recycling capacity and markets. So we've, we've certainly, I think, touched on, on climate change quite a bit already, and we can continue to talk about this. But I also want to get our, our two discussion questions on COVID-19 up here now as well. And, you know, welcome to take any, any comments across any of the questions we've, we've raised so far. And this has come up a little bit as well. So again, what impacts does COVID-19 have on waste management? And are there specific waste management initiatives that may be either problematic or beneficial to implement as we adjust to the impacts of COVID-19?
John, we actually had a hand up from, it might have been an earlier question. So Tamla, I'm gonna unmute you. Not sure if it's this question or the previous one.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. It was sort of just to follow up on previous comments. And, you know, I'll add my thanks to DEP for holding these multiple meetings and, and listening to these very significant comments that, that are coming in. I couldn't agree more with, you know, previous speakers that are urging DEP to look at including an aggressive plan to achieve zero waste. You know, including, oops, sorry, my notes are crazed. Well, including zero waste. I mean, currently, you know, we have a sort of a runaway problem with trash disposal and incineration. And I think we'd all like to see significant strides achieved during the upcoming solid waste master plan that would hit at the, the underlying issues, achieving zero waste so that less waste is available to go to incinerators or to the trash, you know, facilities. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, no other questions at this time, John? Oh, we have another question here. Paulina, I'm gonna unmute you. Just give it a, if it is a slight delay. Okay.
Yeah, so I could, I just want to ask, are there any measures that are being taken to protect workers when they pick up recycling or trash in terms of COVID-19? Because they're obviously, you know, having a really high exposure, and it's putting them at a vulnerable place. And so I was just wondering if there are any measures that have already been placed in terms of that. Thank you.
And John, you want me to answer that one? Sure. So, yes, they, there are. We had met at the initial outbreak. We had regular meetings with the solid waste industry, not just to cover the waste workers, but also the recycling workers, too, who are out there. And, you know, talk to the industry about proper PPE, you know, and how they could protect themselves. The industry, there was guidance put out by the CDC on solid waste management and how that should be handled. And the facilities and the operators and the haulers all, you know, took, took measures to make sure that their the health and safety of their workers was taken into account. I mean, an example is that the, the workers themselves, in many cases, don't go to their place of business and meet in a room and then go to their trucks. And then very often now, they're going directly to their trucks. They're not engaging with anyone. They're signing in electronically and trying to so keep that distancing apart, along with the pickup of the waste and the measures that they're taking to ensure safety there.
The next raised hand is from Janet Dominance. I'm gonna unmute you. Okay, Janet, your own.
Thanks. Thank you very much. So a couple of things. I first want to echo the thanks to DEP for spending the time and doing these extra hearings. My name is Janet Dominance. I'm the Director of Massburg and along with Clean Water Action and Community Action Works and Conservation Law Foundation, we did launch a campaign last year to ask the DEP to set a goal for zero waste. And I just wanted to take a moment to put a finer point on that, which comes straight from DEP's own information. And for, you know, I again, appreciate all the documents and background work and info that there is on DEP's website. When we, and I, I'm not clever enough to like shrink my screen and pull up the pie chart at the same time. I'm sure I would just like end up leaving the meeting inadvertently. But there is a pie chart that puts the concept of zero waste into very clear slices, if I may extend on that metaphor of pie chart. And I'm just going to take 30 seconds. And I'm sure I'll get some of the numbers wrong, but the basic idea is this, approximately, we dispose of almost 6 million tons a year in Massachusetts. So going to incinerators and landfills here or somewhere out of state. Of that 6 million tons, approximately a third, maybe a little less, is organics. It's food waste and yard waste, which we all know could be diverted. And I think John, a moment ago, was talking about anaerobic digestion. Like, none of that should ever go anywhere near a landfill or an incinerator. Something like 20 to 22% is paper and cardboard and products that have been banned by DEP's own regulations for 20 years, if not more. There's single use plastics. There's containers we could get with the bot, which we should ban. There's containers we could capture with the bottle bill. There's wood, metal, glass. If we look at DEP's own pie chart, something around 75%, like instantly, should be diverted. You know, we'd have to do the old fashioned thing of separating our waste and have paper and cardboard separate again. There are markets for that right away. We don't have to invent anything. So I just feel like a lot of people have said zero waste. And I just wanted to take a moment to put a finer point on it. It is very clear, like in a very good diagram, how we would get like three quarters of the way there. You know, next week, next month, next year, whatever. We do not need 10 years to know what to do with the vast majority of what we're now disposing of. So we need to take a little while and set a goal and figure out the last 20, 25%. I'm very confident in Massachusetts with all of our brains and resources and passionate people, like we've heard at this hearing and the two before it and the ones last year, we can get there. So I don't mean to lecture to anybody. I'm sure everyone here, you know, has that information. But I just felt like I wanted to put a finer point on it. And then I personally, I mean, I don't think this is directly related to COVID, although obviously, a lot of people are moving out of the city, back to be with their family, what have you. And I went to say goodbye to someone last week who lived in Brighton. And I went before his flight on a Monday morning, and I got caught behind a garbage truck in Brighton. And I literally watched before me, like, everything that is wrong with our system right now. And I took a bunch of pictures. I don't know if I can show one here, but, you know, a box spring, a mattress, a big couch, a dresser, lamps. These things are going into this machine, being ground up into, you know, feedstock for a landfill or an incinerator somewhere. It's worse than opposite day. And as I sat there for those, you know, 10 minutes behind this truck, it was just, you know, everything that is wrong with our infrastructure. And I, I know there's been other cities and places mentioned, you know, we're not talking pie in the sky here. We're talking about actual public policy, what we say, zero waste. None of what I saw going into that one truck should happen. Textiles, mattress diversion, you know, you name it. Anyway, I probably talked too long, and I apologize, but I was trying to wait.
Okay.
Janet, did you want to share your screen? Because I, I could possibly do that for you.
Yeah, I, it says host disabled participants screen sharing. And I like, I'd be afraid that I'd pull up like, pictures of my kids or something. If you have it and can do it.
On. So I should just hit yes, I guess. There we go. That's it, right?
Yeah. And I mean, it's not like I went on a hunt for, you know, seeing what I could find. It's like, I just happened to be visiting this young person who was moving back to be with his family. And I pull out of the parking space, and I sat there 10 minutes. I mean, and you can see, anyway, it was, I was, I literally felt my heart rate go further and further up. It does not have to be this way. We know what we need to do. Zero waste is internationally recognized public policy. And we, none of us, I don't think any of us, pretty much on this call, want to talk about, you know, more recycling and more, you know, more of what we have. And we just want it to be different. So thank you very much. And I'm sorry if I took up too much time.
Thank you very much. We have another question, Steve. I'm gonna mute you again.
I, we lost John's screen with the, are we still, are we back on the COVID impact? Yeah, okay. Again, I want to go for the record that, you know, COVID-19 is a new impact for this industry. I've been with the group for 28 years. And, you know, we were having a regular January and February and early March. And then, you know, the virus got for real and all kinds of very interesting things happened. There were a lot of new demands placed on the companies and the personnel in the industry, more time to plan for safer operations and commitments of new financial resources to conduct the operation safely, to protect the public health and safety, as well as the safety of the employees. We have idled trucks. I mean, there's been a big hit on the business side. So a lot of commercial work is off. On the other hand, we furlough drivers there and helpers to manage with the operations of the companies. Our waste industry has high fixed capital costs, trucks and brick and mortar facilities and other overhead, you know, remain in place despite of the fall off in the business. And those costs remain during the pandemic. And without the corresponding robust number of customers, generators paying for the collection recycling and disposal, it skews the economics of the system. Many of the recycling and waste companies are stuck now, too, like so many during the crisis. We have ever growing expenses with limited revenues coming to pay for them. And it's a surefire financial difficulty for some of the private taxpaying businesses and the employees of the companies. The other one is that, you know, our companies in the industry offer good paying jobs with good benefits, that once the dust settles from the pandemic and once operations approach some sort of equilibrium in the post 19, COVID-19 economy, we believe the company still in operation will continue to honor, respect their employees every day by continuing to provide good jobs. Our employees are the backbone of our industry, and they've been yo men and yo ladies getting the job done every day. One of the other things that's really important to remember about COVID, our industry was deemed essential, recycling and waste companies, and our workers were deemed essential by state and federal authorities during the pandemic and the shutdown. Our companies, our employees worked every day and reported to work. They picked up the trash and the recyclables, and they managed it safely during the pandemic. They were exposed to unsafe conditions, and we did our best with getting warnings out about proper PPE, about washing your hands, safe distancing. And, you know, we had to do things in our material recovery facility and operations to make sure that we had adequate workstations. And we, we, like any other industry, have been touched by COVID, but particularly in Massachusetts, we have not had any large scale systemic problems where we lost a facility or a department or whatever. So we're very fortunate there. Like, I think the, 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 one of the long term care facilities in Western Mass was just sort of a poster child for everything that went wrong with COVID. But we've been able to get through that with the, with the skill of the management, the help of the workforce, and a good working relationship with the DEP and the CDC and OSHA and others. So we're grateful for that. We're grateful to be deemed essential. One other, one last thought, and I'll, I'll, I'll end on this note. I did a session today on commodities for the virtual waste expo trade show coming up. And it was very clear that the, what we do in the world of recycling today is really important, even though we're just one or two steps of the supply chain. The, the companies that consume the plastics and the fiber and the metal that we produce from our curbside routes, working with our residents and citizens and businesses, they too are deemed essential because their customers, in order to deliver supplies and services to the Americans during, to our country during the pandemic, and their customers needed those feedstock materials that we collect. So we're all part of an essential industry. It's more than just collecting recyclables. It's getting those recyclables back into the manufacturing and closing the loop. So the materials can be reused, and we can improve the environment and have an efficient system in that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So I just want to take a moment. I think, I think we've heard from a lot of people on, on the call today, but I just want to encourage, if there's anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet or share thoughts who wants to, you know, please, please let us know and, and we'll, we'll be sure to give you a chance to share your thoughts. and, and we'll, we'll be sure to give you a chance to share your thoughts. And we, yeah, we can also just open it up at this point. If there are any comments that, that you wanted to make that maybe don't relate specifically to one of the questions we put up here so far, we'd welcome those comments as well. It doesn't, doesn't have to be about environmental justice, climate change, or COVID. So if you have other comments that you want to share about the master plan, we would, we would welcome those thoughts as well.
So far, John, no hands raised.
Yeah, okay. Well, let me, let me go ahead to the next slide. We can still, you know, keep this open and still welcome comments, but just want to kind of go over the next steps and additional resources and information for you here. So, you know, we're, we're here tonight, our September 1st meeting. We have another meeting scheduled for next Thursday, the 10th, same time, at 6 o'clock. We also encourage you to, in addition to sharing comments with us via these meetings, we also encourage you to submit comments to us here by email or by mail. We do have an email address set up to receive comments specific on the master plan. Where our comment deadline for those is September 15th. And that's depp.swmp@mass.gov, G-O-V. Or they can also be mailed to my attention, johnfischer@massdp, 1 Winter Street in Boston, 02108. And then we also have up here our link to our solid waste master plan web pages. So this is where you can go to see the draft plan, to see our summary presentation about the draft plan. And we have been working to also post our recorded meetings. We're a little bit behind on that right now, but we should have the, the previous one posted shortly, and then we'll, we'll, you know, get these next two posted as soon as we can. So we will also have the recorded meetings posted up on that website as well. Going forward, there's, there's a little, takes a little bit of time to get that all together, but we will be ultimately posting recordings of all four meetings by the end of the comment period. I'll just leave this open for just a moment longer, if anyone else has any other thoughts they want to add here at the end. But I'll also take the opportunity now to thank everyone for taking the time to join us here tonight. I know your time's valuable, and we really appreciate you taking the time to talk with us and share your thoughts, so I thank you for that. And we'll, we'll maybe turn it, turn it back to Christine now.
Thank you, John, and I appreciate everybody getting on the call tonight. This is my second meeting. I missed the first one because I was on vacation. But I think that the engagement is really important as we move forward in finalizing our solid waste master plan for 2020 to 2030. And we will be looking, as John said, looking at all comments, and we're recording here. And I think that this has been a really valuable conversation, and I appreciate everybody attending. And we'll be back, we'll be back here on, on the 10th. And hopefully, we'll see some of you back. And we are, again, we're, the department is very much committed to reviewing all comments. And, and, and we, we, we think that this additional stakeholder involvement is very important, particularly on the issues that we lay out around justice, climate change, and COVID-19. So we have a commitment to continue to engage with the communities. And I think this is an example of that, and we look forward to the continued engagement with you. So I appreciate everybody taking time out of your busy, busy schedules and attending a virtual meeting in the evening. And I also want to give a shout out to the folks from ERG who have been helping us, and also to the staff at DEP who are working hard on this issue and have worked in this part of this issue for many, many years. So thank you all. With that, unless there's anything else, I guess we can wrap up for this evening. We'll be back again on the, on the 10th of September.